And he served our country as a paratrooper and military police officer with the 18th Airborne Corps in Fort Bragg. His career as a certified public accountant and long-term instructor of accounting at Virginia Commonwealth University for more than two decades taught thousands of students not just the language of business, but the meaning of service. When Jim entered public service, public office in 2008, he brought to the board the same calm, principled, and steady hand that served him in the military, in business and in education. He served five terms on the border supervisors for Chesterfield and held leadership roles as the chair in 2014, 2021, 2024, and as vice chair in 2010 and 2022. But beyond his titles and projects, we remember Jim for his character, his humility, his willingness to listen, his respect for every constituent's voice, and his unwavering belief in leaving things better than he found them. He was devoted to his wife of 52 years, Ms. Judith Holland, and his children, Jessica and James Matthew. Jim's legacy lives in every school, library, park, and program he touched, and in every student, constituent, and colleague who felt his kindness, encouragement, and steady leadership. You would often hear Jim say, "One of my greatest honors and privileges of my life is to serve my friends, neighbors, and community." May his memory be a blessing and example for all of us.
Delegate Gardner moves that when the House adjourns today, it adjourns in the honor and memory of Officer Supervisor James "Jim" Holland. All those in favor shall please rise. Motion is agreed to. The delegate from Henrico, Delegate Laverre Bowlin.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, we are joined in the Capitol by some remarkable women, the members of my chapter, Upsilon Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, who are celebrating 100 years of sisterhood and service this October. Upsilon Omega was chartered on October 24, 1925, becoming the first Black sorority established in the city of Richmond. Its founding members, five visionary women led by Dr. Zenobia Gilpin, built a legacy of leadership that continues to shine across our Commonwealth and beyond. For a century, Upsilon Omega has uplifted our communities through service, education, and empowerment. Their aka Shoe Bank has provided shoes to Richmond Public School students since 1954, ensuring that every child can walk confidently into the classroom. Their Young Artists Showcase celebrates the creativity of local students, and their Future Young Leaders Program helps middle school girls develop the confidence and skills to lead with purpose. The chapter has also awarded scholarships every year since 1933, helping generations of students reach their dreams, and their members have gone on to serve at every level of the organization, including as international presidents, regional directors, and national leaders. Mr. Speaker, for 100 years, the women of Upsilon Omega have embodied what it means to serve all mankind. Their legacy of excellence and compassion has left a lasting mark on Richmond and on the Commonwealth of Virginia. I ask that we give these outstanding women a very warm House welcome as they celebrate their centennial anniversary, 100 years strong of sisterhood, scholarship, and service.
Congratulations and welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keys-Gamar.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today in the Capitol, we are joined by the Virginia League for Planned Parenthood, a leading reproductive healthcare provider and advocate working across our Commonwealth to ensure access to comprehensive confidential and high-quality sexual and reproductive health services. The Virginia League for Planned Parenthood offers a broad spectrum of care regardless of a person's insurance or ability to pay. Their network of health centers serves communities in Richmond, Virginia Beach, Hampton, and beyond. In addition to delivering vital medical services, this organization plays a key role in championing reproductive freedom, patients, autonomy, and health equity in the Virginia Legislature and in our local communities. Here in the Commonwealth, the work they do ensures that individuals and families have the information and ability to make their own informed choices. Mr. Speaker, I thank the team from the Virginia League for Planned Parenthood, for their dedication to the health and well-being of Virginians, for their advocacy for accessible care, and for standing up for the right of every individual to make critical life decisions with dignity and support. It is my hope that we would give them a very warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. Delegate from Hampton, Delegate Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, today in the Capitol, we are joined by members from the Service Employees International Union, that's SEIU. They are representing thousands of frontline public service workers, home care providers, airport and property service employees, and city and county employees throughout the Commonwealth. Today, we have two locals represented by SEIU Virginia 512 and SEIU 32BJ, who both bring together public service workers in cities and counties across Virginia, from home healthcare aides to librarians, mental health professionals, maintenance workers, property service workers, janitors, security officers, airport service workers, and others who keep our economy functioning in Virginia and elsewhere. They fight for wages, benefits, and workplace dignity and unity to improve the services they provide and the lives of their communities. SEIU is a critical partner in ensuring that the Commonwealth remains strong and just. They stand for the idea that every worker, regardless of the job they hold or their background that they come from, deserve a voice, fair pay, safe working conditions, and a seat at the table. Their efforts are not just about workers, they are about stronger communities, reliable public services, and a fair economy for all Virginians. Across Virginia, the work of these unions touches everyday life, from cleaning staff keeping our state buildings safe, to the home care workers supporting aging neighbors, to the county staff managing parks, libraries, and public services. We order them to recognize that their organizing and advocacy make possible a higher standard of work and living for many. Mr. Speaker, please join me in welcoming the members of SEIU Virginia to the Capitol today for their dedication, their voice, and their commitment to the working people of our Commonwealth. It is our hope that you would give them a very warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Jones.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of two introductions and one motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today in the Capitol, we are privileged to welcome the Henrico branch of the NAACP, an organization dedicated for the fight for civil rights and social justice in our community and beyond. If they are here, ask them to please stand. The Henrico NAACP has a rich, longstanding history of advocating for the rights and dignity of all individuals, particularly those from marginalized and underrepresented communities. Their mission is to ensure political, educational, social, and economic equality for all, working tirelessly to dismantle systemic barriers that contribute to racial injustice. The Henrico NAACP has four core missions: advocacy for racial equality, community engagement, education and awareness, and support for our youth. The work of the Henrico NAACP is essential in promoting social justice and equality, reminding us that the struggle for civil rights is ongoing. Their commitment to uplifting the voices of those who have been silenced is a testament to the power of community action and solidarity. Mr. Speaker, just this weekend, the Henrico NAACP, along with other chapters, joined the Virginia State NAACP and celebrated their 90th convention where they renewed and recharged their commitment to advocacy for those who need it the most. Let us acknowledge their important contributions and the vital role they play in advocating for justice and equality in Henrico and throughout Virginia. It is my hope that we would give them a very warm House welcome.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Henson, oh, sorry, welcome to the Capitol. And second, you got another introduction and a motion, my bad.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in the gallery today, we have with us Sheriff Dr. Antoinette V. Irving. I would ask that she stand. Mr. Speaker, Dr. Antoinette V. Irving is a proud native of Richmond, Virginia. She assumed the role of Sheriff of the City of Richmond in 2018. She leads one of Virginia's largest sheriff's offices overseeing 450-plus staff members. Sheriff Irving is the new president of the Virginia Sheriff's Association. The VSA was established in 1933 and is the only organization representing all of Virginia sheriffs, deputy sheriffs, and support personnel. VSA has almost 11,000 deputies and support staff members. I request that the members join me in extending a warm House welcome to my friend, Sheriff Irving.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourns today, it adjourn in the honor and memory of Michael Eugene Archer, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Today, I welcome and encourage all of us to honor the extraordinary legacy of Michael Eugene Archer, known to the world as D'Angelo, a proud son of South Richmond who unleashed Virginia's potential through his transformative musical gifts. Every Virginian deserves recognition when they elevate our Commonwealth on the world stage. D'Angelo did exactly that, pioneering the neo-soul movement with the sound that married classic R&B traditions with innovative production techniques, creating a musical language entirely his own. We're so proud that D'Angelo's journey began right here in Richmond, Virginia, learning piano at just three years of age and performing in his father's Pentecostal church. From these humble beginnings rose an artist whose vision would reshape American music and inspire countless creatives, creators who followed in his path. Through masterful albums like Brown Sugar, Voodoo, and Black Messiah, D'Angelo built a legacy of artistic excellence that earned him four Grammy Awards and worldwide acclaim. His work stands as a testament to the power of authentic artistic expression, pushing boundaries while honoring the rich tradition of soul music. Working musicians deserve champions who demonstrate the artistic integrity need not be compromised for commercial success. D'Angelo showed us this was possible, creating music that was both critically acclaimed and deeply resonant with audiences across generations. We extend our deepest condolences to his family, including his son, Michael Archer II. D'Angelo's musical legacy will continue to inspire Virginians and music lovers worldwide for generations to come. Let us honor his memory by continuing to support and nurture the artistic talent that flourishes across his great Commonwealth. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Richmond, Delegate Jones moves that when the House adjourns today, adjourn in the honor and memory of Michael Eugene Archer, also known as D'Angelo. All those in favor shall rise. The motion is agreed to. Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Henson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that House take up out of order, HR 945, on page one of today's calendar.
Clerk will report a resolution.
House Resolution Number 945, celebrating the life of Captain Barry Wayne Mayhem Jr.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move the adoption of the resolution, and I request to speak to the motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, I rise in honor and to celebrate the life of Captain Barry Wayne Mayhem Jr., a respected and distinguished leader of the Fairfax County Fire Department, excuse me, who passed away on March 31, 2025, due to occupational cancer after years of service safeguarding our community. Originally born here in Richmond, Barry was a longtime resident of the Masonneck area of the Fairfax County, where he was fondly known as the Mayor of Gunston for his active role in local life. Barry was driven to support others and began his career in fire service as a volunteer firefighter with the Dell City Volunteer Firefighter Department. In 1999, I was born then, Barry joined the Fairfax County Fire Department, where he served for more than two decades and offered his expertise to the Technical Rescue Team, Fire Boat Program, and Urban Search and Rescue Team. Barry trained generations of new firefighters and instructors at the Fairfax County Fire and Rescue Academy, where he served as a trusted mentor and friend to his fellow members of the Fairfax County Fire Department. Outside of his career of public service, Barry was known for his love for spending time on the water. He supported disabled vets as a volunteer with the nonprofit organization Veterans Fishing Adventure Incorporated, in addition to spending his limited free time with his family and friends. The General Assembly joins Barry's family in honoring Barry's memory and extends our condolences in ensuring his legacy of service will not be forgotten. Mr. Speaker, I move that motion.
Delegate from Prince William, Delegate Henson moves, all those in favor of adopting the House resolution shall please rise. The resolution is adopted. Delegate from Albomar, Delegate Lauffer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Today in the Capitol, we are honored to welcome the United Campus Workers of Virginia. And if they are here, if they could please stand. There we go. An organization affiliated with Communications Workers of America, who are committed to advocating for the rights and well-being of campus workers across our state. The United Campus Workers of Virginia represents a diverse group of individuals, including faculty, staff, and graduate workers at our public institutions of higher education. Their mission is to ensure that all campus workers are treated with dignity and respect, and they strive to create a fair and equitable work environment. They fight for livable wages and benefits that reflect the hard work and dedication of campus employees, understanding that fair compensation is essential for the well-being of workers and their families. The United Campus Workers of Virginia are also dedicated to protecting the rights of workers, ensuring that they have a voice in workplace policies and practices that affect their lives. They build solidarity among campus workers, fostering a sense of community and shared purpose, which enhances the strength of their collective bargaining efforts. And the organization advocates for equitable treatment and opportunities for all campus workers, particularly those from underrepresented and marginalized backgrounds. In a time when the importance of education and the role of campus workers have never been more vital, the United Campus Workers of Virginia stands as a beacon of support and advocacy. They remind us that the strength of our educational institution relies on the well-being of all those who contribute to their success. Let us take a moment to recognize their invaluable contributions and the impact they have on our communities and campuses. Mr. Speaker, it is my hope that we would give them a warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today in the Capitol, we are joined by Birth in Color. This is a dynamic, Virginia-based nonprofit organization dedicated to the advancing of maternal health, reproductive justice, and culturally inclusive care for all birthing people. And since its founding in 2018, Birth in Color has been on the mission to dismantle systemic barriers and reshape the way we think about birth, parenthood, and reproductive support. Through doula training, advocacy campaigns, storytelling platforms, and supportive services, they are uplifting families in underserved communities with a vision built on equity, empowerment, and community. In particular, Birth in Color has made deep inroads here in Virginia, offering free or low-cost doula services, prenatal and postpartum support, childbirth education, yoga classes, lactation support in the Richmond area and beyond. They've expanded their programs to include Hampton Roads, Lynchburg, Danville, and Martinsville, with the express aim of narrowing racial disparities in maternal and infant health outcomes. Their work reminds us that safe, supportive, culturally-affirming birthing experiences are not luxuries, they are fundamental rights. By partnering with families, training doulas of color, offering hands-on support, and advocating for policy change, Birth in Color is helping to shape a healthier, more just Virginia. And I'm grateful for Birth in Color's work with us on the omnibus legislative package and their continued commitment to serving Virginians. Mr. Speaker, members of the body, please join me in recognizing the team from Birth in Color for bringing their passion, expertise, and care to our Commonwealth and to our Capitol today. And I hope that we would give them a very warm House welcome.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Shan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In the gallery today, we are joined by New Virginia Majority, and if they're in the gallery, ask that they please rise. New Virginia Majority, or NVM, has been at the forefront of advocating for social and economic justice, working tirelessly to ensure that all Virginians, especially those in communities of color and low-income neighborhoods have, who have been historically marginalized, have access to the political process and to ensure that every voice is heard and that every vote is counted. Their ongoing efforts do not go unnoticed, from mobilizing voters to providing resources and education to help individuals understand their rights and the importance of civic education and participation. They also foster a culture of informed and active citizenship, champion policies to promote economic equity, affordable housing, healthcare access, and fair labor practices, and they build coalitions to foster leadership and empower individuals to advocate for the change they want to see in their communities and in their neighborhoods. Their commitment to social justice, voter engagement, civic education, grassroots organizing, and community empowerment, it's not just admirable, but it's essential for the health of our democracy. As we face pressing and unprecedented challenges today, the work of organizations like New Virginia Majority reminds us the power of collective action and the importance of inclusivity in the political process. They advocate for policies that uplift all Virginians and strive to create a more equitable future for all of us. As we welcome them today, I hope that we can reflect on the importance of their mission and the impact they have on our communities, and I hope my colleagues will join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Cohen.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today in the Capitol, we are joined by the Virginia Association of School Librarians, or VASSL. The recognized voice for excellence in school libraries across our Commonwealth. For over 50 years, VASSL has provided leadership, professional learning, and advocacy to strengthen library programs in Virginia's K-12 schools and promote lifelong learning and academic success for all students. VASSL represents more than 1,400 members across seven regions who serve as librarians, media specialists, library staff, and instructional partners, working inside our schools to nurture curiosity, ensure access to information, support literacy, and equip young Virginians with the skills to succeed in the 21st century world. In my district and throughout our Commonwealth, the work of school librarians is more important than ever. They collaborate with teachers, integrate digital resources, teach information literacy, build inclusive collections, and create safe spaces for students to explore ideas, read widely, and imagine their future. VASSL's commitment underscores that strong library programs are not optional, they are central to student achievement. The Virginia Association of School Librarians is dedicated to Virginia students, to strengthening our schools, and to affirming that every child deserves access to a great school library, a caring librarian, and the tools to succeed. From this shy kid who sought refuge in the books in the Mountain View Elementary School Library, and whose remarkable librarian introduced me to books that took me places very far from home, I have no doubt that I stand here today in large part because of what she did, maybe Judy Blume and Madeline LeIngle as well. With that, I would just like to welcome you to our Capitol. I hope my colleagues will join me in welcoming leaders and members of the Virginia Association of School Librarians with a very warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Cousins.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise today for an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you. Joining us in the gallery today are members of the Richmond Crusade for Voters. I will ask that you please stand and be recognized. The Richmond Crusade for Voters was founded in 1956 to challenge the voter suppression tactics of the Stanley Plan and massive resistance, and to empower Black Richmonders to fully participate in the political process at a time when barriers to voting were widespread. Since its founding, the crusade has worked tirelessly to advance its mission, to increase the voting strength of the population of the city of Richmond, and to improve the moral, social, economic, educational, and general welfare of our people. Through decades of civic education, advocacy, and voter mobilization, the Richmond Crusade for Voters has helped to strengthen democracy, expand representation, and ensure that the voices of all Richmonders are heard at every level of government, most critically through the power of the vote. Today, nearly 70 years later, the crusade continues that proud legacy, and I want to thank them for being here today and ask that we please give them a warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. Welcome to the Capitol today. Delegate from Henrico, Delegate Laverre Bowlin.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, we are joined in the Capitol by representatives from Param Doctor's Hospital. If they are here, I ask that they please stand. They are here celebrating 50 years of serving central Virginia with compassion, excellence, and care. For half a century, Param Doctor's Hospital has been more than a hospital. It's been a cornerstone of our community. It's where families turn in moments of both joy and uncertainty, where lives begin, lives are saved, and where every patient is treated like family. are saved, and where every patient is treated like family. Over the years, this hospital has grown alongside the community it serves, expanding, innovating, and adapting to meet the needs of patients across Henrico and the greater Richmond region. That commitment to accessible, world-class care close to home has made all the difference for countless families, including my own. And behind every success story are the people, the doctors, nurses, technicians, and staff whose compassion and dedication keep this hospital's mission alive every single day. Mr. Speaker, I ask that we extend the warm welcome of the House to Param Doctor's Hospital as they celebrate 50 years of healing, service, and community, and as they look ahead to the next 50 years of excellence in care.
Is that where you had the baby? That's appropriate, thank you. The delegate from Suffolk, Delegate Clark.
Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of introduction.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today in the Capitol, we are joined by Voters of Tomorrow. If they could please stand. Awesome. A dynamic youth-led organization dedicated to empowering the next generation of voters and strengthening our democracy. Voters of Tomorrow has been hard at work across the Commonwealth, registering over 100 new voters, knocking on hundreds of doors, and making thousands of phone calls to engage Virginias ahead of the November 4th election. Their mission is simple but powerful, to ensure that every eligible young person not only has a voice, but uses it at the ballot box. Through grassroots organizing, civic engagement, and a steadfast belief in the power of participation, Voters of Tomorrow is proving that the future of our democracy is bright, energized, and deeply committed to progress. These young leaders remind us that democracy is not a spectator sport, it is something that we must all take part in, especially our next generation of voters. Mr. Speaker, let us extend our grateful, our gratitude to Voters of Tomorrow for their tireless effort to inspire civic engagement, strengthen voter turnout, and make democracy more accessible for all. And I ask that we give them a very warm House welcome.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Loudoun County, Delegate Racer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today in the Capitol, we are joined by Care in Action, and I would ask that if they are in the gallery, they would please rise. A women-of-color-led nonprofit organization that advocates for the rights, dignity, and fair treatment of domestic workers, the nannies, the house cleaners, and the home care workers who form the backbone of our care economy. Founded in 2017, Care in Action has been deeply engaged in Virginia, organizing care workers, building political power, and helping to pass legislation that strengthens protections and opportunities for those who care for our families, our elders, and our communities. Through advocacy, voter engagement, and leadership development, they're ensuring that women who care for others have the support that they need to care for themselves. Their mission is clear, to make work valuable, visible, and respected in every corner of our Commonwealth. Mr. Speaker, I ask that we extend a warm House welcome to Care in Action for their tireless commitment to uplifting care workers and building a more just and compassionate Virginia.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol. The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a motion.
The delegate has the floor.
I move that when the House adjourned today, it adjourn in the honor and memory of the Honorable Judge Gerald C. Jones. May I speak to the motion?
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I've thought about honoring my friend Gerald, I've thought about, in all of my service, I think I can count literally on one hand the number of speeches that I have heard on this floor that really made a difference in my understanding and that stayed with me always. But let me start that with a quote, actually, from Roger Chelsea, who said much the same thing on June 4th, just a few days after Gerald passed. "Rare is the time when a state legislator, through the power of his own personal painful narrative, changes the minds of colleagues." Gerald C. Jones, given the platform on the floor of the House of Delegates on January 1999, as he discussed the Confederate battle flag, displayed an oratory so gut-wrenching, so authentic, that he swayed opposing delegates to his side. And I was there, and I heard it, and I heard gut-wrenching is the right word. Let me quote what first hit me so hard. And that was that when he was just six, returning with other Black children and their parents from a field trip, they saw the flag, the Confederate flag, being waved in a field next to a burning cross at a Ku Klux Klan rally. Quote, "The fear in that bus was so great, you could smell it," said Jones. "I saw the stark fear in my mother's face as she looked out that window. All we could do was hope and pray that we would not be molested because of that symbol of hate and violence." Gerald was born just two months after Brown versus the Board of Education was decided unanimously that segregating our schools was illegal. So here is this young child at age six. A year later, after this incident on the bus, he and his brother attempted to enroll at Ingleside Elementary School. We were not only told, and this is a six-year-old, "N, stay out, N, go home." All we would dare try to do was to integrate their schools, but we were greeted with waving Confederate flags. I will jump ahead and say that the next thing that I have always remembered, this very accomplished man, who was one of the 17 who integrated the Ingleside schools, of course, it was during massive resistance, so there were all kinds of barriers put up, and he had to pass all kinds of academic tests. But he was one of 17 who integrated. And he was also one of the few who integrated a prep school later on. And then he was admitted to Princeton. But what I remember about his statement when he was admitted to Princeton, how when he walked in his dorm room, there were Confederate flags on his bed. And that kind of personal picture, and the way in which his oratory could deliver it, and the respect that you had to have for the man. Because also, as I have reviewed some of the things about his life, I was particularly taken that his response in being one of the very, very, very few Black faces in all of this academic world, was that he felt it was to get to know everybody. Because here were people that he could be part of, that he could be a leader with, and in fact, that's exactly what happened. He was the first Black clerk for the Virginia Supreme Court, just like his father had been the first member of the Virginia State Board of Education. That leadership was there, that determination to make a difference for all was there. And maybe that's why, way back in 1999, I was so taken by it, because I really felt included. I felt a little awkward when asked to present this presentation today, because I know in his leadership, he has touched so many more, more directly. And if I can, I would like to quote from the speaker. Gerald Jones was more than a judge or a legislator, he was a giant, a presence, a mentor, a friend for so many of us. He was a guiding light. He spent his life breaking down barriers, integrating Virginia's Episcopal School, becoming the first Black law clerk, as I have indicated. But Gerald Jones wasn't about titles, to again, as the speaker was quoted as saying in the press. It was about how he treated people. At Grace Episcopal Church, he welcomed me and my family. He had a steady, genuine way of making others feel like they belonged. And I always felt I belonged in his presence. I felt that this body was inclusive because of people, no, I'm sorry, because of Gerald Jones. He was a giant, and I hope that as we think about his life and how it applies to all of the challenges of our lives, that we do the same. We reach out and we include. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in the honor and memory of Gerald Jones. All those in favor shall rise. Motion is agreed to. The delegate from Henrico, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for three introductions and a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, today I have the pleasure and honor of introducing my sheriff, who is, well, I have two sheriffs up there, but so I better be nice. Anyway, a distinct honor to recognize and ask her to stand, Sheriff Alyssa Gregory of Henrico County, who serves as the president, been elected as the president of Virginia Sheriff Institute. Sheriff Gregory is a dedicated public servant and a respected leader in the law enforcement across the Commonwealth and this nation. The Virginia Sheriff Institute, under her leadership, will continue to encourage charitable and educational activities among the sheriffs and deputies. They will be about educating the public and promoting fair and effective enforcement of law and order. Sheriff Gregory has served the people of Henrico County with integrity, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to justice. Her leadership reflects the highest standards of professionalism and community partnership that we strive to uphold across the Commonwealth. Mr. Speaker, I am so honored again to present and introduce Sheriff Gregory, but also Sheriff Irving. These are two women who are helping to lead the Commonwealth, and we are so proud of that. And so at this time, I will ask that the body will join me in welcoming Sheriff Alyssa Gregory of Henrico County, and thanking her for her, and appreciating her for her service to the people of Virginia. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate has the floor.
Introduction, thank you, Mr. Speaker, again. I will ask that Dr. Bill McGee, the president of SCLC, if he would stand, please. Mr. Speaker, I rise today to recognize the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, founded by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in 1957, following the Montgomery Bus Boycott. Just weeks before its founding, Dr. King visited Richmond, Virginia, working with students at Virginia Union University and Virginia State College, teaching the power of nonviolent protests and civil disobedience. The Richmond chapter of the Southern Leadership Conference proudly continues the legacy, advocating for justice, equality, and human dignity for all people. Leading that mission is Minister William F. McGee, a Richmond native, a lifelong educator who grew up in Atlanta near Dr. King's family, attended school with his children, and later taught at Morehouse College, Dr. King's alma mater. He's a graduate of Virginia State University and Norfolk State University. Minister McGee serves 29 years in Richmond Public Schools and continues to teach and lead with courage and compassion. His life embodies Dr. King's enduring message that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Mr. Speaker, let us extend our heart thanks to Dr. McGee and the members of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference for their steadfast leadership. Please join me as they continue to be committed to justice and their work to move our nation closer to Dr. King's dream. I ask that you would join me in welcoming him here today. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. I think the delegate still has the floor.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, the last introduction. Today in the Capitol, we are also joined by Henrico County Democratic Committee. We're asked if they would stand at this time, please. Mr. Speaker, this is a dedicated and active organization, committed to electing Democrats in Henrico County and the Commonwealth of Virginia and nationwide. Since its foundation, the committee has worked tirelessly to promote democratic values of equality, justice, and opportunities for all. They have engaged citizens in our community to organize volunteers, voters, and candidates for meaningful participation in our democratic process. The committee hosts regular general membership meetings and invite all interested community members to join in shaping and supporting their vision for our region. Their efforts remind us that democracy does not just happen. It is built through dedicated civic engagement, community organizing, and a belief that every citizen has a role to play. As legislators, we know that strong local organizations like this are the lifeblood of representative government, helping to maintain our connection to the people that we serve. So I ask at this time, would you please join me in welcoming once again Henrico County Democratic Committee and their leadership for their dedicated service, their hard work, and their commitment to the shared democratic ideas? Thank you all for coming, joining with us. Please join me in welcoming them at this time.
Welcome, welcome to the Capitol today. The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise for a motion.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the body adopt House Joint Resolution 6006 in speaking to that motion.
The clerk will report the resolution.
House Joint Resolution 6006 related to the scope of business that may come before the 2024 Special Session 1 of the General Assembly of Virginia. This House Joint Resolution is available online to the public and to the members via electronic means.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on Friday, I provided the minority leader a copy of the resolution, and it went live this morning. It includes the same language adopted by this body on February 22nd, 2025, and additional language is added on lines 13 through 15 for a topic that we can also consider during this special session. I move the adoption.
Mr. Speaker. The delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate O'Rourke.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate has the floor.
Mr. Speaker, my first inquiry would be, given that special sessions, had by the very nature, only occurred for specific reasons, ergo, we have resolutions controlling what can be considered during them. And subsequently, to my knowledge and experience here, they've never extended for more than a one-year period. However, the original Resolution 6001 was precipitated by the Assembly's inability in 2024 during the regular session to come up with a budget. Thereby, we went into special sessions specifically to address the need to have a budget going forward. Two subsequent amendments to that similarly were related to potential budget action. Mr. Speaker, my first parliamentary inquiry would be, given that we have now acted on final action on the 2024 budget and all amendments thereto, and adjourned sinny die, are we not in a posture whereby, given the constraints of the early resolution, the initial resolution, that it is moot on its face and we are not here specifically on that same purpose, ergo, not properly in a special session?
No, we're in proper session. And the motion is in order. The delegate from...
Mr. Speaker, I have a further parliamentary... Mr. Speaker, a further parliamentary inquiry.
Say again?
Further parliamentary inquiry.
The delegate has the floor.
Given that ruling, Mr. Speaker, given that the original amendments to House Resolution 6001 were bound by the fact that the original resolution was only to address the budget, and those two did have budget implications. The language of this amendment or this resolution being proposed goes beyond the original purpose of that special session. I would therefore ask the Speaker to rule on whether they are germane as an amendment to that earlier special session, given that its purpose was only to address the budget and its financial implications on the Commonwealth.
House of God, please. The motion is, the procedural resolution motion is germane.
All right, one final, if may, Mr. Speaker.
Delegate from Spotsylvania, Delegate O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What will be the vote necessary to adopt this resolution today?
Simple majority of the members present.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Scott County, Delegate Kilgore.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the delegate rise for a serious question?
I yield, Mr. Speaker. But according, yes, I yield for a question.
Will the delegate yield for a question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
You might want to give me an opportunity to intervene.
Thank you.
The delegate from Scott County, Delegate Kilgore.
You know, I'm reading the, and thank you for supplying me with the House Joint Resolution language over the weekend, but I'm reading it. And of course, on this side, we do not know what the process is going to be for the week. The first question I have, Mr. Speaker, it says a joint resolution proposing an amendment to the Constitution of Virginia relating to reapportionment or redistricting may be offered. And the question I have, ladies and gentlemen, is such a reapportionment or redistricting resolution going to be offered during this session?
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Mr. Speaker, I respond that the plain language of the document is clear. It says what it says during this 2024 special session.
Further question, Mr. Speaker?
Delegate has the floor.
Just so we can make plans on this side of the aisle, could you walk me through the schedule for the week?
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The delegate will likely hear me move that we adjourn until Wednesday. That is my understanding when the committee will meet. That's the plan.
Further question?
Will the delegate entertain another question?
I will yield for another question.
So we will not be meeting tomorrow. Is that correct?
The delegate from Alexandria.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is, yes. Mr. Speaker, I respond to the delegate that we will not be meeting on Tuesday. That's not the plan.
Thank you.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Lefwitch.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask that the patron would yield for a question.
The delegate yield.
I yield, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate will yield.
So I wanted to start out with, there is a question here, Mr. Speaker, but I think I need to preface that with reading the statute that talks about adopting constitutional amendments. In the section 30-13 of the Code of Virginia, and it says, "In addition to such duties as may be prescribed by the rules of the House of Delegates, the clerk of the House of Delegates shall, at the end of the session of the General Assembly, prepare a well-arranged index of the Journal of the House and the documents printed during the session by order of the House. He shall have published with the Acts and Joint Resolutions proposing amendments to the Constitution, Joint Resolutions providing for studies for legislation of each session of the General Assembly, the unadjusted United States Decennial Census Counts for the Commonwealth's counties, cities, and towns, and a carefully prepared and well-arranged index of the Acts and Joint Resolutions." It goes on to say, "Mr. Speaker, the clerk of the House of Delegates shall have published all proposed amendments to the Constitution for the distribution from his office and to the clerk of the Circuit Court of each county and the city two copies of the proposed amendments, one of which shall be posted at the front door of the courthouse, and the other shall be made available for inspection, for public inspection. Every clerk in the Circuit Court shall complete the posting required not later than three months prior to the next ensuing general election of the members of the House of Delegates, and shall certify such posting to the clerk of the House of Delegates. The clerk of the House of Delegates shall report to the General Assembly at its next regularly, regular session, the action taken by him under this section, including the costs incurred and the printing and distribution of the amendments. The reports shall be published in the Journal of the House of Delegates." So, Mr. Speaker, with that backdrop, my first question to the patron would be, would the clerk of the Circuit Court who posts proposed constitutional amendment pursuant to this special session, which would be within three months of the next general election for the House of Delegates, be violating 30-13?
Mr. Speaker.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I would respond to the delegate that the section, the code section that he read predates the 1971 Constitution, which does not have the requirement. And then the legislature actually explicitly in the debate in the House intended to exclude those provisions. And the Constitution Title 12, I mean, sorry, Article 12, Section 1 does not have that requirement.
Okay. So would the patron yield for a second question?
The delegate from Chesapeake, will the delegate yield?
So if the...
Will the delegate yield?
I yield, Mr. Speaker.
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker.
The delegate has the floor. The delegate will yield.
So if the General Assembly did not intend to follow this statute, why was this statute not repealed? And secondly, would the clerk of the Circuit Court, who fails to post the proposed constitutional amendment pursuant to this special session, at all prior to the general election of the House of Delegates, be violating this section?
Delegate from Fairfax.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker?
Delegate has the floor.
I understood, I thought that the delegate was yielding for questions about the procedural resolution. These questions seem to go far beyond the procedural resolution that's up for debate. Is this question in order?
The questions are not, they are out of order. They're not germane to the procedural resolution. They may be in order later on down the road, but not now. The delegate from Buckingham, Delegate Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm just curious if the patron would yield for a question?
Will the patron yield for a question?
I yield, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Constitution of Virginia doesn't prohibit murder, but that's in the Code of Virginia, as is section 30-13.
Mr. Speaker, point of order?
The delegate, the delegate is out of order. Do you have a question?
Absolutely. I'm curious how the clerks of the Court of the Commonwealth of Virginia are to comply with posting these 90 days before an election when they didn't know about it until far less than 90 days before an election?
The delegate is out of order. I just said that order, that question is not germane to the procedural resolution that's before us. It may be relevant later, but it's not right now to the procedural resolution that is before us, whether we can adopt this language or not. Not the constitutional amendment that you want to talk about down the road. The delegate from Powhatan, Delegate Ware.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to speak to the resolution.
The delegate has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So here we are, eight days before Election Day, near the conclusion of our 46-day election season, sitting in Richmond. The purpose of this unprecedented special session during an election is to hitch Virginia belatedly to the pell-mell bandwagon to redistrict, or to speak more honestly, to gerrymander the Commonwealth's electoral districts. This session will shortly see, in fact, now has seen the preliminaries to an amendment proposed to abolish the nonpartisan redistricting commission process adopted by Virginians nearly 2 to 1 just four years, five years ago. This amendment will be proposed by one party only, although candor requires admitting that this bad idea of mid-decade redistricting did get its 2025 launch by the president. However, just because a bad idea was proposed and even taken up by a few of our sister states, such as North Carolina or California, is not a reason for Virginia to follow suit. For nearly two and a half centuries, the states have redistricted following the decennial census, responding to the population shifts both in our country and in the states. Even this can be a confusing process for our citizens, as I'm sure many of you can attest from speaking to folks you represent. To give our imprimatur as Virginians to mid-decade changes can only dishearten citizens and heighten their cynicism about politics. Moreover, to do this means undoing this redistricting commission process that state voters approved by more than 65% of their ballots just five years ago. All this for a transparent political power play aimed at heightening one party's power. To see how this power play could work out, just take a look, for example, at Illinois. Illinois went 54% to 40, 54% to 44% for Kamala Harris. That same election sent 14 of 17 Democrats to represent the state of Illinois, 82% of the representatives in the U.S. House of Representatives. How is that possible? It's possible only by trampling flagrantly on the principle of keeping communities of common interest together. It's done only by grotesquely misshapen districts that make Elbridge Gerry's Federalist Salamander look positively symmetrical. To travel down this tortuous path is to transgress longstanding precedent in Virginia. It is to turn our backs on the Virginia Way. It is to stride down a road of doubtful constitutional propriety with an election season well underway in which 900,000 Virginians have already voted. It's to embark on a scramble to cram a second legislative vote, a 90-day waiting period, a referendum, a primary, and a regular election, the last three all requiring 46 days plus time for counting and certifying each process. In short, it is to belatedly attach Virginia to the tail of a bandwagon that is unworthy of her history and unworthy of this body's long heritage. Thank you.
Shall the resolution be agreed to? Clerk will open the roll. Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 50, noes, 42.
Ayes, 50, noes, 42. The resolution is agreed to. The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, will communicate the action of the House of Delegates to the Senate and request this concurrence. The House will be at ease. House will come to order. Mr. Clerk. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business on our granted leave from today's session. Delegates Campbell, Knight, Marshall, Milde, Runyon, and Torian. Clerk shall announce the next order.
Mr. Speaker, the second portion of the morning hour is not applicable given today's order of business.
Clerk shall announce the next order.
The third portion of the morning hour reserved for legislation to go by today. I'm not aware of any such requests.
Clerk shall announce the next order.
Fourth and final portion of the morning hour reserved for member requests for points of personal privilege.
Clerk will call a calendar.
Mr. Speaker, a calendar for today, Monday, October 27, 2025.
Clerk will call a calendar. I see it. The clerk will call a calendar.
For the 2024 Special Session One, first category, memorial resolutions laid on the speakers'.
Who has the point of order? Which one? Delegate from Bedford, Delegate Griffin.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that we return to the morning hour for the purpose of a point of personal privilege.
We're going to move forward with the calendar. Thank you. Clerk will call a calendar.
Calendar for today, Monday, October 27. First category, memorial resolutions laid on the speaker's table. The memorial resolutions to be adopted and blocked are, printed on pages one and two in the block, with the exception of House Resolution 945, which already has been adopted.
Does any member desire to remove a resolution from the block? The delegate, you want to do it on Wednesday? Thank you. The delegate from, I'm hearing now and all those in favor adopted and blocked, the memorial resolutions laid on the speaker's table is listed as announced by the clerk of the calendar. She'll please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Continuing with the calendar, Mr. Speaker. Commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table, the commending resolutions to be adopted and blocked are listed on pages two and three of today's calendar.
Does any member desire to remove a resolution from the block? Hearing now, all those in favor have adopted and blocked the commending resolutions laid on the speaker's table is listed on pages two and three of the calendar. Will say aye. Those opposed, no. The resolutions are agreed to.
Mr. Speaker, that completes today's calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House will turn to the morning hour. Does the clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
No communications, Mr. Speaker. And I don't have a meeting scheduled just announcements just yet, but they will be available online, and I will send out notices once I'm aware.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring. The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Harry.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the House adjourn today, adjourn to reconvene Wednesday, October 29, at 12 noon.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Harry, moves that when the House adjourns today, adjourn to reconvene Wednesday, October 29, at 12 noon. As men in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Harry.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Harry, moves that the House do now adjourn. As men in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Wednesday, October 29, at 12 noon.